Work session of the city council being the, I'm going to call it to order. Being May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Three P M. Invocation will be given to us by council member Swire. Anyone wishing to join us for the morning prayer can use somebody standing up. Councilman.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you that we are able to gather here together. We ask for your direction and all the decisions that we make for the city as a whole. We ask that you be with our city employees and our staff and everybody as we move forward. Thank you for loving us, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
May be seated. Everybody able to hear us? Everybody can hear us? Yes, yes, yes? Okay, I do want to break because I was speaking with the microphone off. So this meeting was called to order at three P M. So it is entered into the minutes. Item three, discuss the approval of the purchase of the exterior Verkata cameras to be installed outside of firehouses two, three, four, five, six, two, three, four, five, seven, and eight, and central. Chief?
Mayor, council, thank you. Just here to discuss approving the purchase of exterior Verkata cameras to be installed outside firehouses two, three, four, five, seven, eight, and central. The two new stations, six and nine, currently have them and were built with them.
Chief, will these be installed, just will they be a three sixty view of the whole property or just the front?
We've walked the, each station with the Verkata sales reps and discussed exactly where we want to where we can see everything that we need to see. Front, back, our firefighters' vehicles, things like that.
When the next person hits that bat, that ballot, we got, we got footage?
Oh, yeah. Or they come in and steal a lawnmower. That's happened.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have a grass problem over there. Council, do you have any questions?
I have a simple one.
Yes.
Let's go two and three and four in the morning. Actually, who is it that's monitoring those cameras, the O P P and also yours?
They have access and we have access as well, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This money is coming out of?
Oh, it's coming out of the EMS funds that we received. I can't remember the, the name of the account, but we do have the money.
The ambulance, that whole?
Name was, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's within their budget.
Okay. Sounds good. Council, we have a consensus move forward? All right. Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Move on to item four, discuss allocation of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four eighty-seven, and program year of twenty twenty-four community development block grant funds. Ms. Curry?
Good afternoon.
It's that time of year again.
Yes, it is. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Just here to discuss the request for the community development block grant and home investment partnership program funding for program year twenty twenty-four. HUD has allocated the city eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars in community development block grant funds for program year twenty twenty-four. In addition, the city has one hundred thousand, seven hundred and six dollars in program income and unprogrammed funds that are available for allocation, which is a total, the total C D B G funds available is nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars. For community development department, we are requesting a hundred and fifty thousand for program administration, five hundred and sixty thousand for housing rehabilitation, one hundred and thirty thousand for demolition, one hundred and eighteen thousand for our short-term rental assistance program, and thirty thousand for the elderly and disabled lawnmower program. HUD has also allocated three hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen in home investment partnership funding for this year. Thirty-one thousand for home program administration, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and fourteen for our homeowner rehabilitation and reconstruction program, and forty-seven thousand, forty-three for the community housing development organization. We also have applications that were submitted for funding from Family Promise for twenty-five thousand dollars, Mills on Wheels for eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, Odessa Links for sixty thousand dollars, and Salvation Army, a total of two hundred thousand dollars.
They've sent this in an Excel spreadsheet so we can allocate the funds and know what we're doing at home before we get here. Is there any way you can provide that for everyone?
Yes, ma'am. I was intended to tell you, I will provide you one that's going to be in an Excel spreadsheet and I'll email that to you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Go ahead. In the booklet we received earlier.
Yes, sir.
Review, you said the Salvation Army had requested a hundred and forty-five thousand, today you say two hundred thousand.
They requested one hundred and forty-five thousand for staff salaries, and they requested fifty-five thousand for shelter security system and lockers for a total of two.
I just picked up on it, my apologies.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Has the Salvation Army ever requested in the past?
Yes, sir, they have requested in the past, and I did include in your notes that in the past they did not use that funding. I believe it was a total of three hundred thousand dollars that we had to, that had to be returned.
And then reallocated?
Yes, sir.
You, you recall what year that was?
No, sir.
So are they requesting this again?
Yes, sir.
Your management. The same management that's in Midland is now here. If I, if I understand that correctly. I spoke to the gentleman some time ago, but I wasn't aware that they were going to request monies.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I can find out when they received it and what happened.
Well, there, there's been issues in the past, so I understand the, the security system and the lockers. When are we going to be doing this?
June the eleventh.
The eleventh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we got more requests than we do dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
Every year.
It's probably a hundred, quite a bit more.
Quite a bit more. So what we'll do is we'll get the annual, we cut funding is what we'll hear. We hear that every year, but we can only allocate what we have.
So much.
So there's always more requests than what we have money, so everyone down the line has to do with, just, we try to spread as much as we can. But these, these dollars keep dwindling every, every year.
Yes, sir.
Council, do you have any questions?
Requested over three hundred and seventy thousand dollars over.
Over. Million and two. Versus eighty-eight.
Mrs. Curry? Ms. Curry?
Yes, sir.
Who actually is doing the grant writing?
Yeah, but we only can allocate nine eighty-nine.
Both for the department housing and HUD. Who is actually pushing the grants off?
Oh, wait, I am.
That's what I figured, I just want to give a recognition there, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Ms. Curry, let me ask you a question. I want to put you on the spot, but can you, are you familiar with these programs?
Yes, sir.
Family Promise and Odessa Links?
I have worked with Family Promise and Mills on Wheels and slightly with Odessa Links.
Okay, so when I'm reading this, I'm looking at a slight overlap on this. Because it seems like they're addressing the same issue, just they're coming at a different place. Is that just me?
No.
Or are you reading the same thing? What is Odessa Links' primary purpose? What is it that they do?
They provide different types of services to individuals that, whether it's housing, helping them find housing, whether it's food, just those services that people are struggling with. Links will come through and try to get them to where they need to be and provide services, again, that, that they have funding for. Whether, again, whether they need assistance for housing, whether they need assistance for food, are they, are their bills behind electricity, things like that? Can they help assist with that?
And something I want to throw out there, some of these agencies are able to fundraise, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
The city is not, correct?
That is correct. We use all of our funding to manage the department. All of our funds go through our programs that we, that we manage and that we help the community with, you know, our housing and building homes and reconstructs. And so all of our funding comes from C D B G.
So did they spend all their money last year?
Yes, sir.
They did?
Yes, sir.
And they, they get the rest of their money from fundraising?
Yes, sir.
I don't kind of like, kind of like mayor, Links and Family Promise seem to overlap.
There's a little overlap there.
Just for clarification, did, did
Mills on Wheels too?
Salvation Army spend all their money last year?
They didn't get any last year. No, sir.
Somewhere I heard that it was
No, sir, they did not receive any.
Salvation Army?
Salvation.
Yeah, they didn't request anything. They were
Salvation Army didn't ask anything last year and neither did Odessa Links.
That's what, that's the difference this year. Okay. Yeah, we could get those, that sent to us, we can start working on, everybody working on individually. It always helps to reduce the, us being up there and go through it systematically.
Yes, sir.
And we find that magic number in between, starting in the beginning. And we'll start right off on my right.
Of course.
So, any other questions on this, on this item? Item four? All right, so you're ready for the marathon in here in a couple of weeks?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll be good. We'll see you then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We'll try to make it as painless possible.
I hope. Thank you.
Absolutely. Item five, presentation of, by Johnson Controls G C I to provide initial assessment recommendations actually regarding Bob Derrington. Mr. Bigman?
Okay, these two are both still on here because we postponed them at the last meeting. A decision has been made, basically by us by the law, that we will go out for our accused. Working on that, that'll be my answer on number six too, but I can say it again in just a minute. It's become a competitive process since we have P S I and J C I both competing for this. But I just wanted to make y'all aware, we're not doing away with it, but we're going to be going out. And we'll probably be adding one or two names to the people that are going to tell us what we can do at Derrington.
Do we have the breakdown with the R F Q's request and request, we, request for, what do we?
Qualifications, right?
Is that what it is? We start getting these acronyms mixed up, so this one's for qualifications. Do we have a?
I'm working on it.
Okay. When will we have it by then?
We should have it by the next meeting.
So you think we're going to have pricing in there as well or no?
In the R F Q?
Yeah.
No.
So
That's what we're going to be looking to them for is pricing.
We're kind of on a time crunch, aren't we? I mean, P S I took, what, eighteen months to
It's about a twenty year.
Gather their information, then we're going to go out to, how long is R F Q going to last?
It'll be fairly short.
We have to We have to send out the notification, so who, who can answer that? Marissa, can you answer that? I know you're hiding back there, but I knew you were sitting there. You got here early. Come on up here.
Yeah, this has been going on forever.
Sure, we, we know that we're, it's a critical situation. So walk us through what's the timeline for R F Qs, we send it out, they say that we have it on the agenda for the eleventh. Walk us through there after that.
Once the proposal is drawn up, we'll advertise it for a two-week minimum period. Once we open the bids from that date, we can then decide on who the selection process will be. That time period can be as short as two, three days. So it can go fairly quick here within a month, and then at that point, we'll be presented to council for.
This is a request for qualifications, is kind of like a professional services?
Professional services, yes. We're looking for the best qualified vendor.
Okay, but we're not going to have a, we're not looking at what, what this thing's costing us at that point?
Not with the request for qualifications, no. Costs will not be a factor.
So after we do that, then we put out an R F P for?
Proposal.
Proposal? Or they do, whichever.
How long does that take after that?
It's the same process, two-week minimum advertised bid.
Six months off.
How, how long did you say, six months?
I said six months. We just keep pushing it back.
Well, because it's been eighteen months that we were waiting on P S I, so I was just curious how we got, got here.
Well, the way we got here was I found somebody that would do it in about two months. And we got ready to have the presentation. P S I showed up on the agenda. That became a competitive process and legally we couldn't even do the, the presentation anymore, so that's how we got here. Now, the last thing you want to do with this, because this is a three hundred million plus project that's going to last fifteen to twenty years to get it done, is to rush this and try to get this done in two months. And that's the last thing you wanted to. We're dealing with things that we've done like that over and over again and given to people that we thought ought to have it and things like that right now. We don't want this to happen again. When we go out and we say we're going to spend millions of taxpayer dollars on something, we want to make sure that we're doing it right and not have a Floyd Quinn situation or something like that this time.
So when we, we go to request for a proposal, did we decide are we looking for a rehab via a decade? Or we, or I thought we spoke about simultaneously a rehab and a reb, a new construction?
We talked about three point three million as a rehab, get us down the road five to ten years if my memory serves me correct. But a new plant, once you start, it's going to take seven years if I remember correctly, at least.
I think we, I think this council believes that we need to do both.
And we are. We are doing both. Right now, we've already committed, I believe, over three, three point five million dollars to it. And right now, some of the rehab is going on even as we speak.
Then we, we talked about getting us, buying us ten, twelve years, fifty to seventy, eighty million, and then a new one. Three hundred. Three hundred million. You know, they're just numbers, we're just, we don't know.
Three hundred million today.
Yeah. True.
So it's, and, and that's on the low side. I mean, that's, that's what's got to happen. We've got a rehab just because even if I had a billion to build it with today, it still wouldn't be done for fifteen years. It's just, and T C Q and everything done.
Okay.
But that's how, that's how we got here.
So can we move this to, instead of work session? Go and put it on the, on the council agenda so we can look at it and see if we need to take action at that time?
And another question, so Johnson Controls can do what took eighteen months, repeated sign, two months?
Basically, they went through, and if you remember, Jennifer was here talking about the efficiency things at the same time she was looking at the Derrington plant. They got Freeze Nichols involved, they went through it, and then they came up less, about a month later to give this presentation. Again, I, I appreciate them noticing that this became a competitive thing and they pulled out. And P S I had to, had to pull out too, as far as the presentation goes. So.
Okay, so councilor, do we have a consensus to move this forward to the agenda for two weeks? That way we can
Well, don't, don't move this forward again. I'm just giving you the results of these two is we're going to do an R F Q.
Yeah.
And I'll try to have that on the next agenda.
Okay. We'll do that and we'll move forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, presentation performance service to P S I, discuss their assessment about Derrington, want to reclamation. This will be the same response as in five.
Ditto.
Okay. We're going to move on to item seven, discuss amending the city charter section forty-six F, changing the period of time president can serve on city council where the services prior to two twenty-four general election shall be counted. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, council, so what you have before you are basically six options. One A, one B, two A, two B, three A, and three B. Have y'all had the, I'm sure y'all have had the opportunity to look at that and, and basically I'm asking you to tell me which one y'all want. Where's the consensus at? Which one do you want? And I can go through them individually if you want.
Well, I think it's something we need to take time with because it's
This is, yeah.
It is changing the charter, it's not, it's not, you know, a resolution or something.
No.
It's a forever deal, and this charter's been serving us pretty well. Have we had any violations of these? I mean, has anybody ever served more than?
Well, this, this is the reason why I brought it up. When this was first proposed, I sat there and I told this, I told the council then, what potentially was going to happen? There was a spirit that people voted for, because this was put on the, on, on, on the ballot and voted, people voted for terminals. They knew what the spirit was. But then there were members of the council that started playing musical chairs, in which was my opinion and my statement. And this has not just happened in Odessa, this has happened in cities, in other cities that had the similar type. So cities basically started tightening up the charter, basically is, there's been different proposals where you serve two terms. You set out a term and then you can run again. You set out a term, you can run again. Here in Odessa, you can run for two terms and then jump from an at-large to another at-large and then jump to a district. And then you can move to another district and continue to serve. So in my opinion, I felt that that was a violation of the spirit of what people had voted on. So I merely put this as a proposal. It's not that, it, it hasn't been a long time. This, this actually came about when there was a push by segments of this community to write a petition against three council members that were very specific. There was a campaign for signatures to remove three council members because they called them a voting block. Then there was a, a discussion behind closed doors to create the at-large position and bring that back, which I lobbied against it. For the reason is that I felt that the reason why city of Odessa back in mid-eighties to nineteen nineties moved away from the at-large, two-member single districts because they wanted to reflect the majority-minority, city and county. And it served this community very well for twenty years. I was a recipient of that in District Five. There was no talk about it, about how well it, 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 it served the community and the whole charter. It was changed like that without, in a heartbeat. And nothing about the potential consequences. And I made it, I made an argument that we could potentially see one member on this council that could serve in three different positions, span of twenty-four years, and all do it from the county of Midland. Nobody thought about that argument, not that it's happened, but the potential's there. So I, I always made no bones about it that I wanted to make this proposal in, in this election, in this presidential year. And it's a discussion. We don't have to decide today. This is still a discussion. Do we have some options before us? And we have to, what, what's the time limit, July?
First part of August.
About end of July, first of August, but I'll pinpoint that then.
Yes, because in order to have it on the November ballot, we have, you know, e, either way, whether the council decides to vote for it or not vote for it. You know, you don't have to, council, I mean, this isn't sentenced up. You know, nobody, no decisions have to be made, but you know, Mr. Jones, you didn't make some proposals, read them over, read them, discuss it with your constituency, with different groups, and then come back with a recommendation, yes or no, or not?
If y'all come up with a, a seventh or eighth proposal, shoot me an email, call me, we'll put that in there. I mean, because I, we may have missed something.
And I have a question, on, on all of these changes here, the option, all these options.
Right.
Just for clarification, let's, let's go with option two A here. Person shall serve, shall not serve as a council member for a period of time that exceeds eight years. The term council member includes single-member district council members, one, two, three, four, five, and at-large.
Right.
And then G, is it, so is that made it separate on G where it says, should a person serve as mayor for a period of eight years? That person will be ineligible for, to then serve as a council member. So is this saying that eight years is the max?
Saying you can't step back. If you serve as mayor, then you can't step back down.
So what's the difference between option two A and two B?
Well, the big difference is H. And the reason why H is because if you look at two thousand and three, everything prior to two thousand and three does not count. Well, we're going to twenty twenty-four here, so everything prior to twenty twenty-four doesn't count. So all of you basically would start over with twelve years. Does that make any sense?
Because the, the charter starts in twenty twenty-four, that's when you start the cap.
Yes. It, it basically resets like it did in two thousand and three. And we threw that in there because in two thousand and three, there's a precedent that, well, it reset to have eight years, eight years.
Yeah. Because I mean, I think the discussion was made about my prior service in nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-eight, and you said, no, it's excluded.
I sent y'all that email.
Yeah, I was, I was mistaken on that because I thought it was that would, that would be me up to seven years.
Right, but you, you actually, you, you're working on your fourth year because of the two thousand and three, that's why I sent the email. And I think I used Council McConnell as a
Thank you for that.
So that's, so an option two B then, that's using example of Councilman Haney serving for, as a council member for eight years. Then could he run for mayor for another and be possibly elected for another, for eight years?
Yes.
Okay. Good luck. Just kidding.
He could do that, and then, and then if you go back
So the maximum would be sixteen years?
Right.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying.
But no musical chairs?
Well, musical chairs in the sense that you go from, let's just say, Councilman Motta going from one up to mayor. But no coming from mayor to, to at-large or back down.
Would any of these?
But now, we do have some of those in there that, that address that, that it's possible.
Would any of these address, let's say, right now I'm in District One, but then I move and I'm in District Three?
But you would be limited to
You're eight years.
Eight years period as a council member.
Okay.
Period, eight years, and that would also include at-large.
So two B would be this option.
So, but, but, but like I said, though, this is, this is, this is what I do. I give y'all options. It's like, do you want vanilla ice cream, do you want strawberry, do you want chocolate?
Neat milk, neat
Nutmeg.
Neat politan is what I want right here, so.
A little bit of all of it.
Yeah.
I mean, this is what we do. So, I mean, my advice would be for you to table it, wait a few days.
Well, we're not tabled, we're just discussing.
Which is a discussion, and so we come back with some recommendations.
Yeah, whatever y'all want to do. If you need time to look over and think about it.
Called postpone.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you need to do, mayor, because I mean, this is not, like you say, it doesn't have to be made today, but at the same time, though, it does need to be made by, I'd say the first part of July so we can get it all done. Because we still got, we still have to do an ordinance in the middle of it, so late, late June, we still got to get all that worked out. So it's done by August first. We'll be fine. Well, we can put it on there in two weeks for you to decide what you need.
Has everyone been able to take a look at it? Because, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Jones, were you, did you propose these three options off of how other cities are doing theirs or?
Yes, we, we had kind of looked, and Big Spring had had, had one of the, those very similar to this, where they basically went down and said, twelve years is all you can do, and that's one of the, that's like three B that we've done there, basically just limits. You know, for twelve years, then others have sixteen years, but it, other cities are doing this, but again, y'all please remember, the city of Odessa is a home rule municipality. So long as we don't do anything that violates state law or the, or the constitution, we can pretty much do what we need to do legally, okay? So that's important to remember. So this is something that y'all will get to decide on what you want to do, because none of this is a violation of law or the U.S. Constitution. It's basically term limits, okay?
Well, what we're, what we're making the decision is putting this on a ballot, the voters
Yeah, the voters, the voters are going to decide this.
We don't. Our decision is
Yeah.
Option of, this is an option, the voters will say yes or no.
Yeah.
They're the ultimate
They're the ultimate decider on this.
Not us. We're just basically, hey, look, you know, this is what we're proposing and
Take it or leave it, so to speak.
And, or they could tell us, you know what, we like it the way it is.
Yeah.
And so, because right now we have just discovered, we, we have all of these options. We haven't narrowed it down, and if we do narrow it down, we want to consider something for discussion. We're going to have people come up and they're going to
Yeah.
You're going to get calls and to get calls and yes or no. It might not be as exciting as a chicken ordinance, but...
Nothing compares with the chicken ordinance.
I know that's rear its head a little bit, and so, but look at this, you know, I've read them over, and I will tell you right now, you know, as far as a horse in this race, I, I like that option two A, that's just me. But we'll continue to discuss this and put it on the work session, and to, and, and see if there is a consensus to move forward and put this on the, on the agenda.
I think it certainly clean out potential future abuse, you know, so I think it's very positive, Mayor.
So you're saying two A is, two A is eight-year limit?
Right.
No, yeah.
Or two, eight-year member, eight-year limit as a council member?
But, but remember now, two A, so any of your service prior to twenty twenty-four general election shall be counted. So if you were just elected four years ago, or two years ago, going forward, you're basically counting against yourself. But if you start out, you do twenty twenty-four like precedent was in two thousand and three, then you have sixteen years ahead.
So that's the difference between two A and two B?
Yes.
I like two B.
See, I mean, it's a matter of, and the reason why we threw that in there is because the precedent was set twenty-one years ago, that, okay, it's only going to be eight years, eight years.
Eight years, yeah.
Yeah, whereas, whereas now, but if you go back and, so you would be going against precedent if you went and said, well, your time before twenty twenty-four counts. That's, it, it kind of runs afoul of what the precedent has been.
We'll absorb it, digest it, and then we'll just come back on it in a couple of weeks and see where we're at, and we'll just continue to do that and see if we could, if we ever reach a consensus by July or August, and get us a, you know, what, what's the definite cutoff line? All right, our favorite item on the agenda, this is quick, item eight, seeing that there's no more business before the city council, entertain a motion to adjourn by city council member.
Semi.
Second by council member.
I second.
Vastas on the favor indicating by saying aye. Those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed, we may as well, we are adjourned. That was famous.
Put my tongue there.
No.